He's texting me today. He's like, can we maybe get on this one?
Yeah, awful.
Hello and welcome to this workshop of the Berwick Planning Board, Berwick Select Board, and Envision Berwick. We have members of all committees here, and the chairmen's all three here, town manager, code enforcement, and members of the public. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I am Noah Cobb. I am the Select Board Chairman.
Jeremy Caston. I'm the Chair of Envision Berwick.
I'm Michael Ru. I am the Planning Board Chair.
James Valissimo, Berwick Town Manager.
Irish Griffith, Berwick Code Enforcement Officer.
Jerry Grabow, Planning Board.
Cyrus Morgan, Envision Berwick.
Cameron Haladic, Planning Board.
Tom Wright, Select Board.
Phil Roy, Vice Chair for the Planning Board.
Mike Laver, Select Board.
Mark Pendigas, Select Board.
Yeah, so a great mix of everybody. Before we start, public comment. Please come forward.
I was gonna say, come right up and have a seat. We can make room for you.
Just state your name and address and we'll hear what you have for us.
You wanna stand up?
My name is Paul Bouvier. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Play to Sarah by admitting that we lived in a mission. L.A. Uzuritz way back when and all those section Article 8 has performance standards for all kinds of things, including nursing homes, a few funeral houses, and motels. We didn't have anything, gas stations, organist's sewers. And when I learned about that, I felt bad because it partially involved. But I'd like to suggest that the town be proactive. There are rumors that there's a gas station over Route 4. Land. And since the residential side of the Route 4 does have a corridor, which is fine, but a gas station. We should have paragraph in Article 8 at the end that defines specific performance standards to control a gas station. And I know there are generic performance standards in the ordinance, but there's no specific ones. And God knows, stations should have some for performance standards. So I think there's enough time to plan it and add some before the November vote. I'd like to ask the Planning Board in this select group, consider adding a section eight performance status for a gas station. And that could be so because most gas stations that are built today are built not only to sell the gas, but to sell beer and things of that nature.
So, just wanted to check on the condition.
I said that. That's all I have. An inch bag doesn't sit out.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm Pat Bouvier, and I'm also on Sixth Country Lane. And I think just to make it clear, we were hoping that, well, we had confidence that the Planning Board wanted to put in some specific standards, performance standards for gas stations, convenience stores, car washes, things like that that would be coming down the line. And we were hoping that initially, since we know we can't get it into the warrant article in time for the people to vote on it, that we were hoping that the Planning Board could plan on the conditions that they would want to put on a gas station, and then they would at this point equal the performance standards. So, you know, like you could develop conditions for this particular thing, and hopefully that would go into the actual performance standards when another warrant article could come out. Plus, of course, there will probably be some additional conditions just because the nature of whatever the gas station or convenience store is going to be, there'll probably be some particular things in addition to the performance standards that are developed. So that was a way to hopefully, since we couldn't react in time, because we didn't know in time, to do anything with the town vote, that that was something. So, something else that I was just hoping that things that, a couple of things that you, of course, we've been thinking of this. You guys probably haven't been thinking about any of this yet. But possible things about performance standards in addition to all the ones that you are already in place and the usual ones. Things about this particular gas station at the end of Blackberry Hill Road would be the distance from public and private water supplies, like the South Berwick wells, and then how far from the wells from surrounding people. Some kind of insurance or bonding to cover future liability issues. Aesthetics of the building, since this is on the, shall I say, the residential end of the RCI district, you have a lot of residences instead of businesses at that end. And living on Blackberry Hill Road, we consider that our neighborhood. And so we would like to see aesthetics be a big part of whatever's put up there, and it would hopefully fit into the neighborhood. And our neighborhood would include Circuit Road, Pond Road, coming out of South Berwick, Blackberry Hill Road, and I guess even up to the Wentworth Road and that area. Of course, I'm not even gonna go here for very long, but the dangerous traffic conditions, I know that's already understudied, but it's very important, I think, to realize that there are school buses that go through that intersection, it's not just cars, and also at this point tractors. So I think it's a kind of a unique intersection to be considering when we're thinking things. Also, maybe the number of pumps. I don't, I've never looked at any gas station requirements, just some kind of, if there's anything general about the number of pumps and how big an area or whatever, that's probably all part of it. And then a big concern for us at this end of the road, at Blackberry Hill Road and that end of Route 4 is the farmland and the soils. And we're very concerned about the runoff from a gas station and the pollution that could occur. I don't know if it would occur just regularly or if it would be, if there was an accident. But I think, I believe that's prime farmland soil there, and it would be very important for us to consider the fact that that could be ruined forever. Then the neighborhood convenience store, that's something else kind of missing in the land use ordinance. We have a definition for a neighborhood convenience store, but that's about it. There's some size thing, a size piece in there, but one thing to consider would be the alcohol sales, what kind of alcohol sales, if there were gonna be alcohol sales. And again, the aesthetics, something similar to fit into the residential part of that, of the road there. You're not business yet down there until you get up further, and so it'd be nice to, if our, like we have the Kind Farms, they've done a really nice aesthetic job of fitting into, I think, things. And if we could have whatever is going next to that and there to be something similar to the residential part of that. So, I know it's kind of interesting, I was talking to Paul about neighborhood, and I was saying, gosh, you know, most people think their neighborhood is part of their subdivision or something like that, but for us, our neighborhood is Blackberry Hill Road, out onto Route 4, across onto Circuit Road and to Pond Road, up further onto the Wentworth Road and the long, old Blackberry Hill Road. I can't remember David at the moment, but, so that to us is our neighborhood, and so it's different than thinking of a little neighborhood. I guess we live in a big neighborhood because it's a rural area. So, just some things, hopefully that, you know, when you're developing your performance standards, you won't forget about some of these things that I've mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing, Paul Bouvier, I think we've figured out was the longest-serving Planning Board member in the United States at the time that he stopped serving on our board over 45 years, right?
44.
44. Then he got bit by that damn tick. Anyway, so when they called me just to talk about this, from a land use perspective, we don't have a gas station definition, so I think for Planning Board, that would be a first order of business. And then because that is not a defined use, there is Section 6.1.2, which goes over omitted uses and says that in the event that a proposed use is not specifically identified in the tables, the code enforcement officer shall select the listed use which most closely resembles the proposed use in impact and intensity, and then basically use those performance standards. And in cases where no listed use is reasonably construed, then basically the code enforcement officer may determine that that's not permitted. And obviously, that's not gonna come up, but with the omitted uses regulation that we have in here, that just leaves a lot up to somebody else's ideas. And so I think defining it and getting some performance standards, and we've got a really good, what, 8.6.7? We got a spot in the land use ordinance ready for it, so that's all.
Name and address?
Oh, Nicole Afto. I live on Win Gate Lane.
Thank you. I mean, I know who you are, but...
You don't. Look on Facebook.
Okay. So, that is the end of the public comment. First item on the agenda is the cannabis license cap. James?
This is an annual exercise, kind of part of when we put in the cap, one of the promises was to revisit it, just because as a general idea, we wanna be pro-market and see where we're at with the industry. I can defer to the Planning Board Chair. I don't really have much more to add.
Okay. I know we've had a question about another license coming in once, but I kind of have something to say, but I've been reading Maine's Constitution, and Section 1, the very first thing in the Declaration of Rights, is all men are born equal, free, and independent, and have a certain natural, inherent, and inalienable rights, among which are those of enjoying and defending life, liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and of pursuing and obtaining safety and happiness. So my thought is happiness, if someone has a piece of property and they wanna put a cannabis store on their property, if it makes them happy, they should be able to do it. I mean, that's pretty basic right there.
Well, I agree. I agree to it. I agree to an extent. However, if pornography makes someone happy, should we open a strip club? I mean, apply the same standard across the board.
I feel like we could all...
We have standards.
...state constitution that just support arbitrary, I mean, it's a little bit, you don't really believe that whatever makes somebody happy is also good for our town.
Having a concert in my backyard every day would make me happy, but it wouldn't make my neighbors happy.
Well, I mean, we all took oath to uphold the constitution. And if we already have it and the state says that we can have it, why are we trying to limit that?
Well, what would you say to towns that don't allow it at all? Is that...
Well, I think they're going against it.
Okay. So, well, then we're in good company. But no, we have, how many licenses out?
That's what I was gonna ask, is what do we have, the caps, the different categories?
Let me grab that actual number. It's, let me grab the actual number.
I think, my reflection is something that there's 20 or 21 total licenses out right now?
19.
19?
Thank you. And not all of them are being used right now.
That's true. Not all of them are active. When we discussed the cap, my argument was that the cap was, I'm not in favor of a cap personally. I believe that the market will bear what it bears. But I was in favor of the cap because it's a temporary measure, because we had a lot coming in, and we needed to sort out the details. We needed to know, like, how this was gonna affect the town, how it was gonna look, you know, where they were gonna be spaced, you know, we wanted to have things actually open up before we just let out another, you know, 20 licenses or something like that, you know? Because at that point, we had basically nothing open, just a bunch of people applying for licenses, and we didn't actually know what it was gonna look like. We also wanted to make sure there were no holes in the land use ordinances, things that people were gonna exploit or misuse, put them in places that, you know, weren't zoned for it. So it was always meant to be a temporary measure to make sure that we got all things in a row, and then expand it outward or eliminate it eventually. So that's certainly a discussion that we can have in terms of pros and cons, so...
How many licenses are currently not being used? Do we know, do we have that number?
It's, well, it goes by conditional uses, so in terms of, pretty much effectively, I think all of them except for one.
And that's the biggest one.
Moving forward.
Kind Farms isn't using their row license.
No, there's one that...
Row license down next to Collins Sheet Metal, that's not being used.
That's the biggest one.
That's the biggest one.
That is the biggest one.
The street buildings are there, so that's not being used.
And they have up to 10 buildings.
But not all of them approved for...
All of them are approved.
For marijuana?
Twelve buildings, yeah.
I thought it was only a couple of them.
No, it's like 60,000 square feet.
Right.
Yeah.
But the issue with that next to Collins...
It's all licensed under one, though.
I think the issue was with the one next to Collins, when we were all talking about it, was the owner didn't know how he was gonna handle his license, whether it was all the buildings, because there were gonna be different players in each of the buildings, was gonna be under his, or what he was gonna do. I think that was what was thrown up in the air.
And what we made them do is it has to all be under one.
Under one.
So if the current licenses that are out there are not all being used, what's the demand signal to say that we need more?
The cap is on conditional uses, so someone can have a conditional use and not have a license.
Yeah, as long as they keep paying for that, right? They have to pay for it.
They're gonna keep their conditional use active, which, so in the case of the one next to Collins Sheet, they've started construction, they've completed one.
Now, also as for town revenue, aren't cannabis is one of the highest paying for taxes?
In terms of industries, it's one of, it's probably storage facilities is one.
Right, but right behind that is cannabis.
Yeah, it's about, in terms of property taxes and license revenue, it's approaching six figures.
Now, in terms of demand, I mean, we can't accurately gauge demand because we have the cap. If, since we have a restriction that says we're not gonna be approving anymore, we're not, I mean, people just are able to look that up pretty easily and go, yeah.
I've gotten one call about it.
If you wanna come up to the microphone for it.
Yeah. I've gotten one call in the six or seven months that I've been here, one call, and I said, I'm sorry, we're not taking anymore.
I've received four.
And we've had the guy from next door come into one of our meetings and ask about it for downtown, for adult use, but we told him no.
I've received about four, maybe five, I think, but I think the fifth one was the one that I had called Dave, the first one. But I've received several from people wanting to know if Berwick was accepting anymore, that we're gonna try and come to town.
And in terms of the actual cap number, it's slightly arbitrary, because what we essentially happened was we had the influx of applications, we had an influx of people coming in, and basically we said, at this point, no more until we get everything sorted out. So it's not like we came up with a number and said 19's the number, or 20's the number, and then there's no more after this.
Right.
We just said, after today, we're not taking anymore until we see how this pans out.
Is it sorted out?
That's a good question.
Is it sorted out?
James, what do you feel?
Well, my opinion would be, I think we have enough storefronts, I mean, Mike may disagree, but I think there might be room to open up for a cultivation facility or two if they're zoned in the right places. I think those can be, if we take a look at the performance standards, really tighten and hold in on on where we want them and try to minimize the, you know, facilities trying to be jammed in areas where we didn't intend them to go. I think they're high property value, and I think at a smaller scale, they have less externalities.
Yeah, especially if it's a cultivation facility, there's limited people coming in and out. Commercial areas, especially in the RCI zone, it'd be a perfect thing to add to it more. I know we have setbacks for that, which is, what, 1,500 feet?
Thousand feet.
Thousand feet, okay.
Well, that's what happened on Pond Road. It's not 1,000 feet from the setback, right? It's 1,000 feet?
It's 1,000 feet.
And that's too close.
From Kind Farms.
How is that too close?
From that house?
No, no, from each other.
Well, from each other, no, it's not from a house, it's from each other. So from Kind Farms to the 11th Pond Road one, it is 1,000 feet from that.
Yeah, right, right. But what about from a house, a setback from a house?
I think it's, I think we put in either 100 feet or...
That's too close.
Well, we put it, we put it after.
In keeping with the theme we started on, which is somebody's right to pursue happiness, how much are we hearing from people, how much of you guys, because I wouldn't necessarily know, that their happiness in their home is being impinged upon by facilities? What's the feedback on that?
They got the munchies.
Very little, very little, in all honesty. Usually there's that up, like, in the beginning, and once something's up, unless Irish is hearing something, once it's there, a lot of times they say they're actually the best neighbors.
I've had one, I had only one complaint, and it was somebody that was due to change their filters, so there was some odor emanating in the neighborhood. I sent them a letter and problem solved.
And that's it?
No, we've had questions on lights, Jeremy, lighting, odor, let's see the people on
Route 9, Tom, right? I'm trying to think of, half a dozen people on Route 9 came there.
Yeah, one point he had a couple things going on up there.
They weren't happening.
Right, and now, when he built the last section of it, we made him go to the new town standards. He was grandfathered in before, so he didn't have to have the odor mitigation and stuff like that, but when he built the last building for that, it's now up to the codes that we have, up to the standards.
The one building, but not all of them.
No, all of them, all of them. That was a condition. All of it had to be under those standards now.
See, so that's the kind of thing that the cap was put in place for, is like, we have these problems, now we can create standards, and we can fix them.
Remember when we were talking, this is a while ago, I remember talking to you about how, was it, in Elliott, was it Dirt?
Sweet Dirt.
Sweet Dirt, they have those nice greenhouses, and you commented about the lights, how they look really nice. Well, we can't even have that here because of our standards.
Why?
Because it's, we have a light restriction. They have to be downward facing, and they can't, they can't be...
The dark sky stand.
Dark sky stand.
We said we can't have lights in a greenhouse?
No, we can't have lights emitting outside of it.
It's gotta go down.
Yep.
They use the lights to grow.
Oh, yeah, but they'd have to cover it, they'd have to...
End the greenhouse. So that's something that, you know, can be looked at.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's, you don't have to, even if they're giving for a permit to do that, you guys can say, okay, yeah, you can do that, and start to change the standard.
Right.
Same in the gas station, if we're gonna have a gas station go away, okay? Caps in all things, aesthetics, all that stuff should be figured out to give the guy a permit, turning lanes, whatever.
Right.
We do it right then, with him or whoever.
Yep, or condition it, yeah.
Small business doesn't wanna wait forever for a couple of years while we decide to come up with some standards, that's below me.
No, I agree with that, too.
I think that just, I think the cap came from the planning side.
Yeah. I remember that.
It was, it was, it bounced back and forth.
I was one of two that were against it. I remember that. And I'll still be against it.
I was probably the one that really was.
For a free market, we should be able to have as many that dictates that is needed, and the ones that are gonna fail are the ones that are gonna fail.
And I do believe that is correct. And the only reason I supported the cap when it came back around was because it was meant to be temporary, and it was meant to just help us patch any holes that might be existing in our current, in our current standards, and...
Don't you think it's still temporary?
I don't think it's temporary, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's still temporary, I mean, so, we're not being overwhelmed with people coming in looking for permits to grow.
No, but I'm saying that, no...
When we start that point, then we can talk about extended.
Well, I'm saying we can, like, obviously not now, this is not a meeting where we're gonna take any votes or anything like that, but I mean, in the future, we can, like, I would like to see the restrictions loosened or lifted until it becomes an issue again, or maybe it doesn't become an issue at all. Maybe we overcame the peak, you know? But if we lift the restrictions and 20 new applications show up on the desk, then we're gonna have to...
You're gonna be the meat grinder.
Well, I mean, even at the standards now, we can't have another store in the new downtown.
Good.
No, no, that's your opinion, though.
That's my opinion.
My opinion is we should have one in there because...
We got one right over there.
The standards to those buildings are a lot different.
Another issue to take into account, though, if we're gonna talk about standards, and I know we don't talk about it a lot, but they had a pretty high-profile break-in at one of our facilities in town that led across a multi-state car chase, and we have very limited resources when it comes to our law enforcement, and, you know, how much more are we willing to invest if we are bringing in a business that could be attracting a criminal element? And granted, I will concede that that may have been an isolated incident, but that was a pretty high-profile isolated incident that directly affected our police department and police departments in neighboring communities, and it affected public safety. So that, I think, any performance standards moving forward should have a requirement for security, whether that's physical security, i.e. barriers, you know, shatterproof glass, whatnot, because that stuff's worth money.
Well, I know with Kind Farms, they put in like $60,000 security system, like, there's...
After?
No, no, this is when they were building it. They put in a huge security system.
And they still got robbed.
But they still got caught.
Kind Farms gets robbed.
His gas stations get robbed.
That's more frequent, it's going in, it's gonna get robbed.
The reality is that that is a pretty isolated incident. We ask the, we ask of the police chief, every time it comes up, every time a new license is up for renewal, if there's ever been any, you know, trouble, if there's been any, you know, if there's not, if there's anything that they could do to improve their security, things like that, and 99 times out of 100, it's, there's no issues. An alarm went off by itself or whatever, we showed... An alarm went off by itself, or whatever, we show up, and, you know, they, they know where to patrol, and these places have security lights and security doors, and, I mean, again, like, I mean, we had a murder a couple weeks ago, like, that was, it was, it's jarring, because it's completely out of the ordinary experience.
Right.
It's not like New York City, or Chicago, or, you know, anything where it's like, those sort of things happen on a daily basis, or, you know, like, so, like, yeah.
If I could just talk about the cap, is, is, the other thing we have to remember is, when we put this cap in place, is Berwick was only, one of the only towns in the area where we were allowing it, and we were afraid we were going to get overrun. Now, I drove up two oh two in Lebanon for the first time in a while, and I was surprised at how many were there. You go down Elliott. So, so that's when we put the cap in, is back when we were the only town allowing it, and we were worried about it.
And Sanford has a lot of cultivation going on right now, too, so it's, it's absorbing some of that away from us as well.
Yeah, and as far as the storefronts, I, I, every time I talk to the chief and the captain practically, I ask them, and I ask them specifically about the one across the street, and they said, other than parking problems on Sullivan Street, they haven't had any issues there, no. So, the idea that these are bringing criminal elements into town, I don't buy that, you know, is, anytime there's any money transacted anywhere, it attracts a criminal element, so.
No, and, and that's one thing I want to, I want to point out to the planning board, too, is, you know, you, you guys go through, you put the licenses in, and you do your due diligence, and you do a great job at putting those conditions in and getting them up there, but then they come before us, and when they do, you know, we go through, James, we go through the police department, and we go through those questions to make sure when that license is up, or when that renewal is up, we're asking those questions, and, you know, like we said, I mean, for the most part, these are the best businesses and people that we have in town, is what we get back, you know, from the police department, they hear nothing, right now.
They, they tend to be very, very receptive to criticism, very respectful of the process, because they want to be here.
They know there's a state.
And they know, yeah, they know.
There is a huge market, and, I mean, it beat lobster. It beat lobster.
And have the whole food shop set up?
Irish, what do you got?
So I, I have two things I want to say. First of all, I'm, I'm not even going to ask if any of you have been into any of the pop shops, because that's probably a don't ask, don't tell thing, but as your code officer, I have gone into a couple of them to talk to them about things that, you know, you know, issues with lighting, and particularly the silver farm, that's silver therapeutics, and because I don't have a, like, a town uniform, I walk in, and they treat me just like every other customer, and every shop in here has checked my license, and swiped my license, so they're also tracking whoever's going in, so that's good, because that, to me, if somebody's getting their license scanned, they're less likely to be a nefarious type. But it seems like the conversation in this, I just want to ask, like, where everybody's standing here, because it kind of seems like conversations are going all or stay where we're at, like, free for all or stay where we're at. What are the possibilities of just increasing it by five or ten, and then?
Or giving another date, like, another year, and then. Because I mean, at a thousand feet, you can only put in so many, it's not like we're going to put in another thirty of them, they're not, they're not going to fit.
If we raise the cap by, like, five and see what happens, and see if we, all of a sudden, you know, work gets out that we've raised it by five, and all of a sudden our office is overrun.
Well, see, that, that makes sense on paper, the only problem, the two problems with that, one, you know, any number we pick is just going to be arbitrary. And two, I mean, we have businesses that take three license spots, you know, they go, they go, we have cultivation, we have adult use, we have medical, you know, and so if we only have five slots available, we could have one business come in and take more than half the slots available to us, you know what I mean?
That's true.
So what if we took a hybrid approach and, and said not to exceed X amount of licenses, and then got it on the ballot, and let the, the townspeople speak for, for what they want or what they don't want in their town? So we just, we, we make a determination and say, okay, not to exceed, what's the number, three more, five more licenses? And if everybody's in agreement, we put it on the ballot, and we let the people decide.
Again, that, like, any number we pick is going to just be, we're going to pull it out of the air.
Correct, but at the end of the day, it's going to be up to the town anyways.
And it's fair and equitable.
Well, no, the town didn't vote on the moratorium.
Like, really?
The select board, it was, it was, it was, yeah, it was, it was brought forward, we voted on it, we were able to put it in place, and we're able to remove it as well. So, I mean, again, it, it, maybe an arbitrary number is the solution, but, you know, I, 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 the whole problem with the moratorium in general, and again, this is the issue with the more.
The cap, not a moratorium.
Yeah, the, the cap, whatever, on, the same thing, the idea for the, the cap on gas stations or whatever is, like, we don't want to deter future business just because they see it, you know, on the books, you know? We might put a cap in place because we want, we're worried about this one, and then deter two other ones that are looking at, you know, putting things in place. So, I lean toward, you know, opening it back up and letting, letting it fall, and see, you know, keeping an eye on it, and just seeing if it, you know, if we get a big run or not, or.
How much cap do we have left? How much space we have?
None, it's, it's all been, it's all been taken up.
And it's been closed for a couple of years now.
So there's nineteen licenses?
Yep.
If there, it, I mean, would it be recent?
But they're not operating.
Yeah, there's a couple that aren't operating.
Couple are not.
So I'm going to quote Tom on something right now, and I remember this, this is burned in my, my brain. Berwick needs to be welcoming to all, plain and simple. And I think the more we keep it simple, the easier it's going to be. We have the standards that we can enforce, we have a code enforcement officer that can enforce those issues. I think that taking the cap off at this point would probably be, in my opinion, the best thing we could do.
And the other thing, too, is even if we take the cap off, if all of a sudden we do see a rush, we can reinstate the cap.
That's right.
Does that sort of thing ever happen?
What, that?
Marijuana?
Well, yeah, where, where.
Well, how about any other industry?
They quickly turn it back off?
Well, how about any other industry in Berwick?
Yeah, well, no, that's it, I can't think of anything.
Well, we stopped building permits for a while, they have.
Oh, yeah, back in the eighties.
Yeah, that was before my time.
Yeah.
For one year.
I was too.
Well, then there was, we only had, you know, twenty building permits a year, or whatever, people camped out for three or four days out here. Seriously.
I heard that was New Year's, right? Everybody spent New Year's Eve waiting in line.
Yep.
I'll say, even, even with that permit cap, there's still, like, sixty houses built that year, so that's more than two or three times.
Yeah, I think, I think I know the, the chart that you showed us a while back, of like, the, the building boom in Berwick, where all of a sudden it just spikes for no reason, it's like, more houses than people in the town. But I think it's something that we can definitely revisit in a meeting, maybe have a public hearing about.
Get us some more information about, you know, exactly how many phone calls you've had requesting it, and, you know, go forward to that and find out.
I mean, if you have.
Are the, are the people asking, are they asking whether it's a grow or a storefront or anything, or?
I've been asked about marijuana, they usually call, most of them that have called have called and said, hi, I'm just wondering if Berwick is accepting any more marijuana grow facilities?
No.
So, looks like growth is the, the issue, I haven't had anybody specifically ask about a storefront to me. Dave's approaching, so.
And the two people that had contacted me was about starting a storefront and starting at a different place. So, that, that didn't produce marijuana at the time.
Also state that anytime cannabis has been involved on a vote, it's always passed in Berwick. I'm not saying that it still will, but it's been passed by a huge majority.
To quote, to quote Eleanor Murphy, the first time around, she said, she said, I didn't know Berwick had so many stonies.
Well, how many of them lived through the sixties?
It is a drastic change on volume of people who vote, too, anytime that cannabis is involved, so.
So, yeah, we can work that into a future select board meeting, let people come and talk to us about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, make, make sure we have all the information about it. If you have any information on people that have reached out to you about it, you, well, when we actually figure out when we're doing it, you're welcome to invite them, and they can come talk to us, and see what their intents and issues are, I mean.
I'll be honest, I will start asking contact information going forward, but in the past, it's just been, sorry.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
No, wrong at the end.
And that's, I assume that, but I just mean, like, if you happen to have any, you know?
I might have some in my, I do sometimes jot notes when people are, so I'll see what I can find.
I guess Dave's same for you, too, if you have anybody calling, just.
Yeah, that's something, you know, not, not next, not next meeting, which is tomorrow. Maybe not in two weeks, but, you know, soon we can put it, you know, on the agenda and have a, have a discussion about it. The next thing on the agenda is moratorium and process.
Just wanted to go over definition of a moratorium, and that, a moratorium is adopted by the town's legislative body, so that would be town meeting, and that was kicked, kicked around, where was it, the, the select board can do it. Basically, if we wanted to put, put together a moratorium, I think it'd kind of be a collaborative effort, ultimately forwarded by the town, but it goes to town vote, it's effectively an ordinance.
And the moratorium can't be indefinite either, can they?
It's a maximum of a hundred eighty days.
Right.
With one extension, right?
So even if we did put a moratorium on the ballot for, for, for June, it would only last until the end of the year.
Right, and I would recommend holding a special town meeting if we went down the moratorium route, because we received a traffic movement permit for the gas station. I'm only not getting into specifics too much for the applicant, but just to say that it's more than just a rumor, we know it's coming, and a traffic movement permit is related to planning board, obviously, but it's very much like a site plan location permit, where it happens parallel to planning board, so it's not unusual to start seeing traffic movement or DEP permits, I don't believe it'll need a DEP permit. And a traffic movement permit can take upwards of a year, where planning board could take a few months.
One of the. The traffic movement, is that, is that talking about putting in a turning lane there and everything?
That would be one of the considerations, yes. A traffic movement permit, it's the highest level of traffic permit that the E P, or DOT has.
Okay.
And what if they, DOT says it's fine?
I would believe that the planning board can condition it as a requirement.
All right, okay.
As long as you make a fi, I mean, I think making a finding on vehicular access, that the proposed layout shall provide for safe access and egress from public roads, and if the planning board makes a determination that safe egress cannot be achieved without the turning lane, and it says it right here, the proposed layout shall provide for safe access and egress from public and private roads by providing adequate location, numbers, and controls of access points, including site distances, turning lanes.
So this would be a turning lane onto, onto Blackberry, right?
Right before, it'd be, well.
It depends on which way the lot's laid out.
Yeah.
Yeah, in this, in this case, it'd be a.
Well, it is, also, also, is, we've had enough, you know, studies and things done of that corridor already, you know, that one we sat through with the state police five years ago, was it, or so, is, you know, and they state, and the DOT in there says all these things would be a good idea is to have, but the state's not going to pay for it. So this is, this is the time when is, you know, I, I have not paid too much attention to all of this, but this is the time when we make sure that our needs all along that stretch are taken care of. You know, if it, you know, turning lanes all the way up to Blackberry Hill Road and up to Pond Road, so be it, that's what we force them.
The other, what James didn't say is the speed, it's fifty-five. Right. It can't be fifty-five if you're going to have this. I live there, I can't get out on hundred, I go down Circuit Road, or I go around the other way.
I've been trying for ten years to get the speed changed, they won't do it.
They wanted to raise it.
You can do it if enough people write to the DOT, my wife checked it out, and complain, they have to come down and address it.
I would think the more curb cuts there are, the more.
Right. Well, you would, you would think, but we also have people getting walloped in their car pulling out of Kind Farms, we had a fatality there, we've had, I mean, there's a member of this board who, who lost a loved one on that road, we've had, how many fatalities have we had on that road? You know, and, and I mean, it, it's, it's in our job description to ensure public safety, and.
But again.
We have to be, we have to be cognizant of that, and not just follow the almighty dollar.
Unfortunately, what Mark and I found from our meeting with the state police there is, all of those accidents are driver error, it's not a matter of, you know, other things.
Driver error, or one of them's drugs, huh?
But if you, even with driver error, even, even with driver error, if you reduce the speed, you reduce the impact, which is less.
They're going to come up and tell you, Phil, well, reduce the speed to forty-five, then they're all going to go sixty-five to pass everyone going forty-five.
Right.
Just an argument that the state will give you.
I agree.
Well, I, I, what we, what we need to do is put pressure on state representatives and our state senators.
Well, and the people with the deep, the people with the deep pockets who are going to develop out there, that should be.
When I, when I was in the legislature, is, we helped lower the speed limit on Cranberry Meadow Road, is by getting involved in it, so.
When they put in the ATM, they, Northeast Federal was forced to put in the turning lane.
Right.
So, this would be the same type of thing.
Exactly. Force them to do it.
Right.
No problem.
And then, you know, talking about the aesthetics and everything, is, you know, we have the dark sky ordinance, so we have to control the lights and everything, is, it, yeah, like I said, make it blend in as much as possible.
Yep.
I mean, we also, we also have, like, sign ordinances as well, too, right?
Sign orders, lighting orders.
They're not going to be able to put up a giant gas sign, are they?
You can't have anything that's internally illuminated.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to have an electric, electronic.
Wouldn't you have an electronic sign?
Well, the electronic message board.
There's already a bunch on the road, why couldn't they?
They were in before the standards were in.
Once the signs break, they can't replace them, they have to replace them with externally illuminated.
If I could bring up a, a point about the moratorium, and, and the reason I came and presented before the select board, and, and I was, I was incensed about it, and, and I will tell you that I felt that the planning board, you know, there was a sense of urgency placed on us to vote on that land use ordinance and get it through, and I understand that there's timelines involved, but I'm not completely deaf to, to the comments of the townspeople, and the townspeople who came here tonight to express their concerns with that, that type of business and its location. And, and just based on that, and based, we have to be sensitive to perceptions, and I'm not saying that anything was done inappropriately, but I'm just saying the fact that we voted on it, and we didn't have performance standards for gas stations, and then immediately after that, we're saying, hey, there's a gas station on the horizon, public perception of that, we're opening ourselves up for fire, whether, whether.
That's what we're going to do, that's what will happen, Phil. We're going to, as he's building the gas station, his permits, we're going to set the standards then.
Yeah.
We're not going to do it after, we have to set it, before he gets a permit, this is what you got to do, if you don't want to do that, no permit.
Absolutely, so, so, in that spirit, Mark, I would, I would challenge us to do our due diligence, because we don't have a performance standard currently, would it be reasonable to do a short-term moratorium until such a time the planning board and the select board can come up with, what is a, what is a good performance standard based on quantifiable information, not locally and nationally? What, what is going to be right for Berwick? You know, you're, we're affecting groundwater, potentially affecting groundwater in that area that's on the Berwick and South Berwick Town Line, public safety with regard to the traffic, let's set some standards, and let's take the time to do our due diligence and do it correctly. And if that looks like a moratorium, is that appropriate, and is everybody agreeable?
Well, as James says, we can't unilaterally put in the moratorium, it would have to go on the ballot, which is still totally possible, and, and the town would have to approve it, so, I mean, it's not, you know, I'm of the mind that, I mean, the voters, you know, typically, they know what they want to do.
Yep.
You know, and they only occasionally make something I think is a mistake, you know, but they, so.
By electing us?
Among other things, but, um, no, like, if, if it's a question of, like, you know, should we do it, should we not? It's something that's totally fine to put on to the voters and ask them what they think, you know? It's, you know, we take ourselves out of the equation, they make the decision. If they decide against it, though, we need to be prepared for that eventuality, and just, you know, are to be figuring out what standards we want, and, you know, so that we're not caught because we thought it was going to pass, or something like that, you know?
Right.
And again, it's only going to be six. And again, it's only going to be six months worth. I mean, so it only gets, it only gives you to the beginning of 2024 to have all that set up. I mean, we'll have, we'll have an election in January of 2024.
So if you would just dump a half a million dollars into a lot on move four, how would you feel about that?
I'd be upset. I mean, I would be, I'd be upset too, but one.
I, I think what Pat and Paul said earlier about developing the conditions. I think we need to work on our conditions for that said gas station and then develop that into the performance standards. I mean, that's how we did it with cannabis. I mean, when they came through, we set our standards and then that turned into our ordinances.
There's one thing we got to remember too, guys, we're in a workshop too. We don't have a active permit in front of us, so we can't talk about a specific law.
Can I say something?
So let's, let's, let's get that out there first.
I've been sitting here for, I had a discussion with Lee J. Feldman, the town planner about this. And he said, we can put in the, in the, we can put in it, when we, when, when, when the planning board approves it, we can put in conditions of approval. We can put in, you have to, you can't be within 500 feet of another residence. You can put that in there. If the planning board really feels like that, and that's got a good, every condition of approval has got to get voted on by the, by the planning board.
Right.
So maybe that passes, maybe it doesn't. That's, that's the temporary fix.
And I, I think that's a, a good approach, but I would use solar as, as an example, right? When I first started on the planning board, we had a solar project before us. And I didn't know anything about solar, so I started digging and looking at historical stuff and looking at, hey, how did, what, how'd this pan out in Europe? Where now they ban solar. And you start looking at the ripple effect of that industry, right? So if we are not in front of this issue and we allow a gas station to go in and we don't establish performance standards that work for us, then we deserve whatever outcome we get. And it's the same thing with solar. We got smart on sol, a little smarter on it. We still haven't really developed performance standards, but we have instilled conditions for, for applicants.
Every time that they come in, it's gotten more strict.
Every time it's a little more strict, but I don't want to learn the hard lessons like we learned on solar. Let's get ahead of it.
If it makes you feel any better, I've worked, as you guys know, in several municipalities. And I did look after that last meeting and not a single one of them has performance standards for a gas station. North Berwick might, but that's not one that I was hired by. Old Orchard, Old Orchard does not, Saco does not, Wells does not.
The state's, the state's got a very strict.
I'm just saying, we're not, we're not the only ones that don't have it, is all I'm saying.
No, no, correct. And I, and I think if we look at.
It's not like a massive oversight on our part. It's not. I don't want you guys all feeling like, oh my God, we've missed the, the vote. Because it's just not something that most, most municipalities are handling it with the, the thing that Nicole brought up.
And, and that's what I said when, when it was first brought up is that, that these standards exist at a state and federal level. That we have DEP and main DEPs and we have, we already have regulations on gas stations and, you know, how they are built, how they're designed, how their tanks work and stuff like that. So if we don't have standards, then it just defaults to the state and federal level, which they already do have the standards.
It's similar to when we replaced our oil tank out here.
Yeah.
Close to the river, we had to blow all the rules.
When, 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 when I came onto Envision, I was made to understand that, that the mission was to back up the comp plan. And that the comp plan backs up the surveys. So I've spent a lot of time reading the surveys going back, you know, quite a ways. And when I'm sort of stuck on something with, with Envision, we go back to that. We look at what those surveys have told us and how they've, and I'm on the comp plan too. And the comp plan takes its marching orders from the surveys. And then that becomes all of our sort of marching orders, right? That, that, that what we've set out as the goals of the town become our goals. I think outside of, outside of the, 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 obviously we, we also have a, a, you know, we have our constitution, we have our state constitution. Those are all important, but, but also understanding the tone and the tenor of our town and what, what the citizens want is a huge component of it. And just because something works and, and is regulated at the state level doesn't necessarily mean that it's also correct for Berwick, just like what, what's going to work for Old Orchard Beach, which has a huge tax base from tourism that we don't have. This is a very different town.
I'm more of that. I was just saying we, we're not.
So I'm just saying, of course that, that, you know, people are going to get up the road and you're going to have a gas station before you go to Old Orchard Beach. But it doesn't, it's going to be different here as it should be. And it should always be a consideration what our citizens feel strongly they want out of us and, and what we can deliver to them. And whether it's, it's gas stations everywhere or, or no gas stations, performance standards or a moratorium. We always have to look at, at what they've asked us to do. This is why we're here.
You know, going back to that is the comp plan, the planning board is Route 4 has always been our commercial industrial corridor. If we're going to move anything like this, this is where we want it. That's what we've said in the past. Is, you know, it's 236, Route 9, then Route 4 are going to be our commercial areas. You know, they're the state roads, they're where we want it. Route 4 has the most traffic is, you know, this is where we want to put that stuff is, no, we're not going to have it over on School Street. We're not going to have it on Cranberry Meadow Road. We want to have it where we already have in place, you know, the commercial and industrial zone. And as far as the moratorium is, I, I'm not in favor of one personally. I think that we can handle this through our process to do it correctly. And, you know, is although there isn't a permit, there's nothing in writing or anything, you know, everybody knows that this gas station, a gas station has been thought about. If we put a moratorium on now, that owner's going to come back and says, I'm already in the pipeline. You can't stop me. So.
We got another issue with the moratorium and I'm sorry, I'm impatient. James was going to take this, but part of the, you know, the lovely regulations here. A mor, for a moratorium, it has to be a necessity and it must be needed because the application of existing comprehensive plans, land use ordinances or regulations or other applicable laws, if any, is inadequate to prevent serious public harm from residential, commercial or industrial development in the affected geographic area. And I don't think that's going to pass the straight face test because they're regulated on the state level. They're regulated on the federal level and we can regulate them through our land use ordinances. So I literally don't think that if we put a moratorium through that it would, that it's going to pass.
Correct. And I think that's with anything that we got to be, we got to be cautious of is, you know, people could appeal and people could take the town to court and appeal it there and, you know, we don't have enough to stand on. And now we're just, now we're just wasting taxpayer dollars and we still lose. You know, so now we just cost the town more money and we're not losing side of it.
My question about the legality of moratorium is, we don't have a definition of what a gas station is in our, in our land use ordinance. How do we put a moratorium on something we don't have a definition of it? But it's not defined in our land use ordinance. So, so we, we just, we put gas stations on the moratorium list and then people say, I'm building something, oh, it's not a gas station, it's a fuel depot. Whatever. You don't have a definition for what it is, so I can do it. It just calls them a no.
Fair point, well made.
And, and I think, you know, and unless.
I mean, all due respect, we're just a bunch of people.
Correct.
If we just have a lawyer, he can help us with that. That's not, I, I wouldn't, I don't think we can just stop because we're not able to.
Well, no, but we have a, but we have a process in place. And if you listen to what Lee J. is, that's where we can use the planning board and use the tools we have to say, this is the condition we want to put on this. This is what the neighbors are saying. We want to put this here. This is what we're. And you set those conditions. And, and most of these builders, you know, they've done this in, trust me, in other towns that are more strict than us. Some are less strict. And they're, they're going to come and meet halfway or, or work that way too, because they want to, they want to be good neighbors. They don't want to come in and be disturbed. You know, they want to make money, so they're not going to come in here and build something that the town doesn't want, you know, so.
We don't even take care of what we have. Gas stations in town now.
And one, one, the tanks are expiring.
Right, shit bum Cumberland Farms, it's always looks like hell. Gas station down on the corner. We're setting up a brand new gas station on Route 4.
That's a really good point.
Hey, people want to get their cannabis and gas in a relatively short area, they should be able to.
In an ATM across.
That is our tourist industry right now. People are coming from out of state to come, come just to our stores.
I can tell you that because Blackberry Hills is bypass now.
Yep.
Well, I've been informed, Main is where you get the weed and then Dover is where you get the glass.
Yep.
They have the head shops there.
What shop?
Head shops.
They call them head shops, smoke shops, places to purchase their items that you're going to.
Accessories.
We've left an opportunity on the table that we definitely are going to be making money on and we put in our Walmart of bonds on Route 4.
Walmart of bonds.
I got a question. Pat and Paul brought this up. The water in that area, that's the South Berwick aquifer. They get their water for the town right there.
Yeah, so what we would have to look at was, would be maybe potentially additional.
Well, we could condition annual testing or, you know.
South Berwick should have a say because we're going through this and the development up in the industrial park.
If it affects their resources.
I don't think so because.
What development industrial clock?
They're adding, they want to add a housing development rate on the backside of it.
On 236 stone?
No.
No, off of Route 4, right off the industrial road, Industry Drive, yep.
Mix property?
Yeah, yep.
But they want to use the industrial road out through Route 4 for the people from the 50 housing development to come out through.
So we make them put in.
Right on to the 50, 50 mile an hour.
Well, and make them put our, that road up to the new town standards too.
Exactly. You know, anytime they come across there.
Might be a good thing to add the turning lanes onto that.
Well, no, that, that we, yeah, but the state won't do it, you know? Is they said, oh, if you guys want to do it, we're more than happy to help you.
I'm saying we have to meet with the, with South Berwick, with them on this project. Because our planning board has to approve it too. Maybe that needs to be something that you think about.
Those tanks have to be tested every year.
Yep.
And what happens, like, how much is it to remediate? Like say they open for five years and then they close and then those tanks are there, right, that had oil and gas.
You're going to take them out.
That's a condition you could put into that too.
If that was solar and, and ideally you ask the applicant, you're like, okay, in future dollars, will you set aside money in a?
And that lives in an account or something?
Yeah, in a, what kind of account did we call that?
That would cover up for like, if they did go bust and, and rather than the town having to come up with a mortgage for the brownfield.
Correct, that they couldn't afford it.
The state already has that account.
That would be so useful.
You already have it.
The state pays for the, for them?
No, they put it in, they owned it.
Oh, so whoever buys that, they have to have that money in an account.
No, the state takes the money and keeps it in the account. They call it some sort of fund, I can't remember the name, it's a fund. That's good. And then they have their insurance on it too. Oh, so insurance will have to take care of it.
Yeah, that's a good question. But yes.
Well, for, for one example, like underground oil tank, we, we got an alarm that our oil was leaking into a secondary confinement. So before it became a major, major issue of contamination, we were already aware that there was an issue.
So like there's like an outer layer that.
That's how the tanks are built. I was actually, I just learned about that today on my Boston detour this morning. But that's how gas tanks are built is they have the, the single.
The double walls.
They have the single wall that holds your gas and then a secondary exterior with alarms and sensors in it. So that way, if anything where the gas is actually leaks, you know, and you can stop it before it gets out and into the groundwater, into that.
As long as everything works.
That's part of their, part of their regular testing.
Problems as human beings, that's part of being human. Sometimes things go wrong, right?
But that's, that's one of the things that they have to test and that's something that we can give some consideration to underwriting our conditions for approval and whatever, what have you.
We could have a train derailment and then the tankers on those pollute more than a gas station.
Hundred percent.
Well, luckily they don't, they can't go very fast through there at least.
No, but it's right next to the water for a lot of it.
I have a contact for the South Berwick superintendent, water superintendent, so I could talk with him for a couple of the projects. So I can forward that to the planning department.
Any other comments about the process for possible new gas stations, convenience stores? And the standards that we can impose?
Thanks for the education on moratoriums.
Yes, thank you, James. All right, next item is the edge update.
Um, the first building, the L-shaped building, they have, I think tenants almost ready to fill it. So there's four there now. There's a salon, dental spa, which is great. I got my teeth cleaned there a couple of months ago.
They give you a discount?
They will now.
That's a plug, yeah. So four businesses and a few more on the way. We pause for. Bye, guys. Good night.
Good night.
The building that's being built now is 10 one-bedroom units and two commercial units.
And it's beautiful.
I mean, it looks nice from the outside for sure.
Oh, no, all the framing is, the framing is phenomenal.
That's always good to hear, you know what?
Well, you can tell, you can tell, I told, I actually told James this after I went through and did the reframing. You can tell a lot about a company by the reframing. Because it, it, it speaks to, they're, I mean, they're planning for the future use of that building. They're really like planning 100% for all potential future inevitabilities.
I've worked with that company on other projects, Poland Springs High School. They're great.
Yeah.
They're a good group of people.
Yeah, they have a good group of people.
It's, it's absolutely beautiful. Sorry.
That's why we have them.
I was so happy about going in there and seeing how good they did.
The next building they're working on, it will be a coffee drive-through, so you'll see the drive-through get completed. They're actually going to work on building both of the roads out towards the end of this year. So I believe there's even another building that will be started along the way. So major progress.
Next building goes up on this side of the pump, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's going to be a Roma Joe's.
Allegedly.
It's going to be a coffee shop with a drive-through. It's going to be a coffee shop with a drive-through.
Why did we not, why did we not condition that to be orange and pink? Come on, guys. I thought you loved me. Oh, okay. We've forgiven that.
I don't get it. We did great over there too. Whenever I drive through that one by Dover, it's like got a line in the traffic.
Oh, yeah, in the summer's worth, yeah. It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
People love their coffee.
Any, any coffee shop.
I always eat in the morning.
There'll be some major infrastructure work happening over the next couple of years. They're upsizing the culvert to a box culvert to get the stream across, which will upsize our stormwater capacity for the next 100 years in the area. We have a, we have a drainage project to pick up from the end of the edge to get to the San Folds River. So that'll, it'll pretty much be like the old Sanford Road, School Street project, except I don't believe we're going to have an automatic light there. Just to give you an idea, it's crossing from the edge, cross Sawmill Hill, down Gateway Gas's second parking lot there to this, to the river. So that's happening this summer. Making some good progress underground utilities, coordinating with CMP, Consolidated Communications and Comcast. So getting all the entities together. And we're able to bring power from School Street or from Sawmill Hill and power in a way where we can backfeed some buildings to save a lot on costs and keep the project pretty relatively simple. We met with a contractor and a project manager from Comcast and they both worked on the new market project. So the new market project's a lot of the ways what we kind of model what we're trying to go after. So to have.
New market project?
New market when they, Frank worked on it and they brought all those utilities underground. The contact we have with Comcast and Consolidated Communications was part of that project. And we're working on finalizing some grants and going after more funding in the short term. So that's what I got for the edge updates. Any questions? New Market when they, Frank worked on it and they brought all those utilities underground. The contact we have with Comcast and Consolidated Communications was part of that project. Yeah. And we're working on finalizing some grants and going after more funding in the short term. So that's what I got for the Edge updates. Any questions?
Were they looking for occupancy for the residential units? Is that coming up pretty quick or?
I'm not sure when they, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but they've, I can get an answer on that.
For, for eight Maine, the one that was built?
That's, that, that one's going to be residential, correct? The tall one?
I've only done rough framing, so they've still got their plumbing installation. Oh, yeah, they're going fast, but they're, that's where they're at. I think, actually, I think I might have gotten an email from them to go in next week.
They need their set of apartments to make the building work.
Right.
I know they mentioned what their anticipated completion date is, I just forget off the top of my head.
It's not like you don't have a lot going on.
I mean, I think the big thing is, kudos to you, James, with a lot of the grant funding, what you've, what the town's been able to capture in the last even 18 months of coming from the state and everything. So that's, that's a huge win there, so.
I think if you go back to YouTube, it was us sitting around in joint meetings talking about just what was to come. So a lot of the ways, just all of us coming together, clarifying what the next step is, that is a huge, huge help.
How do we, how do we plan on, so, so my neighbor sold his cows, right? So it's all about milk and cows. How do we, how do we make sure that, well, see that continues as a farm in some sort of way or another instead of a bunch of house lots?
Someone buy it and use it for a farm.
On Wentworth Row is now 800, eight lots for $200,000 apiece. Why has that kept this open land? Why aren't we figuring out where to get the money to buy it?
That's a really good question.
That's what we should be looking at in a lot of instances.
At least going back to what I was saying before, from, from the surveys, people are very clear that that is...
Part of, part of the deal.
Not just part, it seems to be pretty high on people's list. I mean, obviously, what's happened downtown and all the work and all the focus, going back to the 2013 survey, that, that was the big one, right, with the 500 respondents and a lot of it's about that. But I want to say, most of it is about open space, it's about not overdeveloping, it's about being, keeping our rural... Yep, small-town vibes, all of that. And, and people have been clear, with that survey, with the 2019 survey, it's top of the list. And as part of the, the comp plan, one of the things that I keep coming up against, I think just generally, is, yeah, it'd be great to have a plan, but without a, a, a pile of money to go around buying up that property, really you have to plan very carefully.
You have to raise the money.
Yes, yes.
You have to raise the money and it comes from state, federal and private sources.
Well, we have $80,000 built back up in open space and back fees.
But $80,000 isn't going to buy it.
$80,000, what does that get you? Won't even get you five acres today's market.
You know, he doesn't, even given the guy a tax break, you can't buy a property by, by his taxes.
I mean, we do, but we, we do give, I mean, we, we do have tax breaks for agricultural...
You can buy a non-billable lot.
But I mean, like, but I mean, like...
I'm still paying 25 a grand a year for growing trees. I mean, that's no good.
The thing, the thing with, the thing with property taxes is, you know, they have the, they, they have the open space taxes, they have the farmland, you know, subsidies and things. But as a town, we can't say that we're going to value somebody else's property different than another person's property. No, we as a town can't do that. We can't say, all right, farmer A, we're going to tax you at $10 per thousand and homeowner B, we're going to tax you at $20.
Aren't there agricultural exemption courts?
No, there are, yeah.
But not, not in the, not in the town, not, not in the town though.
So how, how do these other towns do it?
I haven't heard of another way they can do it other than through the states, you know, through the state or the federal or...
And I've sat on the board of, the Board of Directors for the Great Works Regional Land Trust as well. How to get tax breaks on land, usually there's a minimum lot size, so it's putting it into open space or current use and it's like eight to 13 acres depending on where you are. But that's the way to basically get that tax break. And to get, to preserve land, we worked on this a lot at the land trust, that's what they do. They don't have a lot of money to go out and buy land and preserve it either. Really, the way to do it is to have people who own the land that are stewards, stewards of the, yeah, stewards of the land and put easements on it to limit development. And that's the easiest way. It may be to incentivize them somehow, I'm not sure how, I'm sure towns have done it, but really...
In, in the past, you know, Great Works Land Trust has a lot of properties in Berwick and they work with private landowners and they raise money. But in the past, they have asked, we had warrant articles in there, you know, to, to, you know, give money to them to buy it, you know, which is, for the Great Works Land Trust, you know, they buy the land, but they continue paying the taxes. They don't, they're not required to because they're a nonprofit, but because they want to work with the towns to promote this stuff, they still pay the property taxes.
They're not, they're not taxing that?
Oh, they are, but they choose not to.
How many, how many of them have farms on them though? Like, most of them is just green.
Talk about here?
No, 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 like, the land trust, how many are used as farms?
A lot of them.
Orange circles for one. That's an only organic CSA and that is an all... Actually, that's, that's not Great Works, that's Meatland Land Trust.
He's right though. What are they still milking cows on? Where are they still milking cows?
Well, so, to my way of thinking and from the little bit of energy and research I've been able to put into this, we have to take a multi-tier approach. And, and one of the things that it would be smart to do is to start to encourage farmers to come here. There are, there are places that put a lot of energy into encouraging people who are going to, to school in Orno or, or in the, some of the ag schools in Vermont, who are interested in, you know, stuff like, I always thought that if, if, you know, the Dunn Farm became a creamery, that, that the people who are looking at property to put a creamery in, that's a, a great place. And I'm not making a deal for, for Dunn, but, but starting to make those connections for people and thinking about this in every way we possibly can seems to be the only way that you're going to save it because you can't, even with the pot of money, you're not going to necessarily solve it. You have to have 20 solutions and spinning them up all at once.
And you would still need somebody who wants to run it.
Right, yes.
Protecting the land's one part, finding somebody who actually wants to run the farm is...
Brewery by coming out and saying, this town values this. We want beer here and that's how we did it.
We have a problem now with the breweries because what is the cost for the sewer plant? You were talking about it a week ago, that the sewer plant is costing too much money. So the brewery that wants to go across the street is, is, they're not game for it because I talked to John Smith about it last Friday, about how, how those tanneries' fees are so high they can't, it doesn't work to put down a brewery. And those guys over there are crying. So what, that's what we should be talking to is the shit plant. Get that straightened out. Find out why. James, you know why.
But wait, before we get off to the brewery, let's just finish the thought for a second. And you're right, it's important, but, but we do, we, I just want to say that, that we have to, we have to put that intention out there and then we have to start hustling. We've got to let people know we want, we, every instrument this town has to encourage, and I'm saying young farmers, but I mean new farmers, and any way that we can compete with other towns where somebody's looking to set up shop, whether it's a brewery or a creamery, or they want to grow organic vegetables or whatever it is, at every level, whatever instruments we have to be helpful and get out of the way of that is, is, that's the best thing we can do right now, I think.
Yeah, now, once we start that and once a few businesses hear about it and they come in and it works great, it's going to just be self-fulfilling. It's going to keep, it's going to keep working if it works out.
We also have almost a cap on livestock too. You can only have a certain amount per acre.
I think in the, I don't think it applies to R3.
It doesn't apply to R3.
And how come, is one on livestock?
Yeah, in R2 and R3.
Yeah, like you can't have roosters in, in...
In R1.
Yeah. If it was up to me, I would say, you know, that's not, that's not a shit. Yeah, I, I have seen that killing towns in California.
Because there was pigs in R1. Downtown, there was something like 10 pigs.
But for livestock, if you want to watch out, they probably not put out a carbon footprint. Well, if you start mixing their feed with red seaweed, that brings their carbon footprint down a buck, that's enough.
Well, yeah, even just rotationally grazing them makes a huge difference. That adds to the soil. Just charity thrusting some across over here.
To Mark's point, I probably shouldn't say what I'm about to say, but I've been approached by two lawyers with letters wanting to buy my land in South Berwick. And when I asked why, I was given the answer that they want my land, which is it can't be developed, but they want it for open space to do something else and have that open space. And I but Dunn's. That's what I'm going to say.
You but the mother there, yeah.
So I'm just saying, this is what I was told, this was just within the last two months.
Send them over.
But my land in South Berwick is going to the Great Works Land Trust. I'm just going to give it to them.
Mine's going nowhere right now, but I would like to talk to them and find out what it is. If they ever call you.
I know what it is.
Tell me. You know, let me know.
I think he'll go outside the workshop.
I wish I knew. I wish I knew how I could do it right now. I'd do it. But I, I, my hands are tied in a lot of instances because of the business.
Or you could do what? But.
Preserve it forever.
Yeah. Talk to Great Works Land Trust.
No, they don't have enough money. I'm not interested in giving it to them right now. I don't know if I can survive. And that's part of the problem. The town steps up and says, okay, we can get this much money to put it into a trust. Right now, it's going to go into a foundation. But the foundation, I don't have to pay taxes if it goes into a foundation, but even still, I'm not sure that that's the right way. I don't know.
Well, I, I'll speak from personal experience. My family, you know, put off on 120 acres in, in a trust with the Great Works Land Trust. And for us, it's worked great. Is, we still get to use the land, we still harvest the wood off it, we still use it for firewood and we lease out the field to a farmer, you know, Charlie Baer from South Berwick. And, you know, with 120 acres is our taxes are minimal because it's either in farmland or open space or forestry or whatever. And, you know, like, the, the big parcel is, I think it's like $500 a year taxes, you know. So if anybody out there looking to do this is, you can do this and still use your land. You don't have to give it up. So there's...
But you're giving it up to only do a certain thing.
Well, you, well, the...
Right, you can't develop it, you can't, but...
Is that if we're going to, I mean, if people want to buy these big parcels of land and they want to develop them into multi-be, housing, multi-billot things, you know, we can talk about in terms of conditions of use or land use ordinance that, that an equal amount of the land has to be kept open or trees or, you know, whatever it is currently, you know, as just a means of not having everything overdeveloped, you know.
Sure, but a lot of times with developments, the front of it'll be the...
If you want to keep farmland, you, you kind of have to have the right neighbors for it too.
Right.
No, not too many people in a big development are going to want cows or livestock next to them.
Spread it into the water.
Right, exactly. I mean, and the sad thing is, is as time goes by, the population is increasing. More people are coming from Massachusetts, New Hampshire.
One of the things we can do...
Anything we can, we can, we can do, we can undo later needs be, but I'm just saying...
Well, well.
You mean as far as ordinances?
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of ordinances, I mean, but, but I'm just saying that if, if the concern is, you know, that we, I mean, obviously, farm, getting farmers and, and maintaining farmland is, is one aspect, but also if overdevelopment and losing rural charm is the, the concern, then we can find a way to make that a condition of these developments where they, you know, keep equal space open, increase lot sizes.
But, but that's not being fair to the landowner.
Right.
That's where Noah, that, that's the problem.
That's called being...
If we want to keep that, we have to pony up with the bucks.
I'm, I'm not saying, well, to be fair, any condition we place on any building is unfair to the landowner. They should be able to do whatever they want to. But we, but we have, but we have limits. And I'm just saying that as a town, if collectively we say rural charm is very important to us, then as a town, we can vote in land use ordinance, which says if you're going to put in a big development, you better, you know, have equal space that you're keeping open as part of that development.
Don't we have open space now?
I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying that that's the way we go. I'm just saying that it's an option that's available to us. So we don't lose our rural charm.
Not to throw one more thing on Envision, but Jerry, I mean, that, like you said, be intentful. Maybe that might be something with, with the farmer's market or anybody that you see, just outreach or find that contact and be like, hey, this is what we want in town, this is what we have, farmers that are trying to, you know, somebody that wants to move in, see if there's a way to just build that network.
We used to have many town land trusts, we don't have that many.
Well, they still have small woodlot owners in Maine too. And I've seen that in other communities where, once you...
Page, cut it all the way back.
Allow them to get their hooks into it. There's a, it's a pretty significant tax exemption, but you have to let them come in and log it every so many years. And you can't develop it, but you can keep it natural, you know, and let it regrowth, treat regrowth. And that Maine does have a program for that. So that's stuff for people to think about, but it does limit what you can do with your land, but it does also protect the land that it can't be developed, so.
Yeah. No, but, yeah, and if it's up in front, somebody knows prior to buying it, this is the condition, you know, they're making that choice.
I didn't buy a home is because they had that, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're making that choice that they know that that's the condition of it already. And that could be something that, you know, you're still going to attract the right people if we, if we find the right network to hit that. Where you're giving somebody a choice, but it's also protecting what we want to protect in town.
I mean, just generally, does everybody kind of, I mean, I, I know some of you, I don't know others of you, where's everybody's, in, in terms of following the, the tone of the citizens, where's everybody's head at with, with, with kind of our, our mission? Again, I'm on the comp plan, right? That's, that's, that's setting our goal for next. It's not done yet.
Comp plan is what, 30 years old? 30 years old and it's been four years since it's been like trying to get updated?
A bunch of surveys. In 2013...
It gets a little steam and then it slows down.
We did one in 2019 was the last, last really big survey.
You can get the tone of the people all you want, but we see it all the time when we go on these sidewalks, right? You got a guy who's, he's not getting any younger and what's his legacy going to be for his family? And, and case in point, several developments within this town. I'm going to sell this to a developer and he's going to subdivide it and he's going to make lots. And it's, it's their right to do that with their land. So the reality is, I'm sorry?
I don't want to be the jerk face here, but that's kind of the reality is unless you guys buy it.
You're going to have developers that come in with big money. And if that landowner, if I'm, if I'm 70 something years old and, and I want to go retire in Florida and I want to leave a legacy for my kids, what am I going to do? I'm going to sell that land to a developer, I'm going to take that money and run. And you can't fault people for doing that if you want to go retire.
We can still hold developers' feet to the fire.
Absolutely, with the green space. Hundred percent, hundred percent. But I don't fault people for selling their assets to retire.
I can't make them, I can't force them to farm on the land.
You could, you could perhaps make it so they could, right?
Or maybe try, maybe try to incentivize homesteading and small, small market farms.
An agrarian lifestyle built into the...
And again, and I think that's where... That would interest the community a lot more than just having one big monoculture farm. And again, that's where I think leveraging Envision on that is, you know, that's that, you could put that out there, this is a farm-friendly town. And you kind of try to recruit those people to buy that land to come in.
As long as it's in R3. Which R3 is pretty big. I mean, there's a plenty, there's plenty of room in R3.
But, you know, try to leverage so that you're getting the right people to buy that land, you know, versus somebody else.
That's like the code creed. I hate to say this and, and we generally don't say it. We think it a lot more than we say it. If you wanted the view, you should have bought it. So, because in the code perspective, the code world, the town has set out their zones. This is what was determined, this is what is acceptable. And if it's acceptable there, then so be it because that's what the town decided. So basically, if you want to keep that view open, you need to find some way for somebody to buy it, donate it, give it to the town. Because if it comes through, like Phil was saying, somebody wants to sell it and develop it, it may not be what we sitting here want to see, but per the zoning, that's what the town wants to see. So...
Talking about the one lot, my neighbor was like, I almost bought it. And I was like, now somebody else is like, but that's what it is. It's not, I, I could have stopped it, I could have bought it.
Communities and that's kind of the reality is, if you want the view, you should have bought it.
It's a slow motion train crash that we're all living while we watch our town...
Exactly.
Become...
Populated.
Not just populated, but...
Densely populated. I mean, it's, it's kind of...
Perverted in, I mean, like changed into something that it wasn't.
Well, everything changes to something that it wasn't eventually. But I mean, like...
Some places don't though. Some places have the money to prioritize those things or make plans to, like, not for nothing, some places build an economy... not for nothing, some places build an economy around what they have that's driving them. And it may just be that we don't, you know, like, the Dunn's stopped milking, right? So why did the Dunn's stop milking? Well, because they're part of a bigger milk system that we weren't able to, like, shift and prioritize in a different way. And there's a lot of reasons for it, it's not arbitrary. And I think with a lot of this stuff, some places, and I'm not saying I wish, I'm here, right? I love this place, this is where I want to raise my family, and I chose it. But there are places where dairies become creameries, and local food systems are prioritized. And whether it's at local government level, or because people have a lot of money for fancy cheese, I'd imagine it's a combination.
They're spending it on fancy weed, so we're not gonna get...
I don't know, I mean, if you could promote it, I'm sure some folks would eat munchies.
Unless you get the munchies, then you want the fancy cheese, you gotta figure it out.
Prioritize fancy fresh food with your fancy fresh weed all the way.
They need to like the organic deep-fried gouda for that.
It'd be nice to have a farmers' market in town that's open all the time somewhere. You know what I mean? Not like we have upstairs here, which is fine, but just...
An actual market?
We don't take care of what we have. These guys across the street have opened a butcher and market that is locally owned. It's not part of a corporate conglomerate, and they want to support local. We should all be shopping there.
Oh, yeah.
That is, we're so lucky to have them, and we better make sure that they expand and always do good business. Because that is exactly where it is.
If it doesn't survive, then shame on us.
Yes, exactly.
Absolutely.
Good to say, we're 90 minutes in, I think that's a good time and way to, we should start thinking about next steps. I think we want to work on marijuana ordinances, we want to shop local. We want to work on gas station standards, Mark touched upon. I think revisiting the sewer fees, and I think we should be approaching the sewer district, ask them for a consumption-based equivalent drilling unit to add to their fee schedule. We should be looking closely at our open space plan, farmland protection. There's also things in the comprehensive plan that get fed in land use ordinance to protect scenic vistas. So we identify them and put them on a map. The more we layer it, it's like layers, just like farming economy is gonna be built on layers. Same thing with protecting our rural character. Is there anything I missed, and I'll just, last thing I'll just add is, we can put a pencil on the calendar for June 27th. That way we won't go another...
Yep, two years.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday, don't get...
I think it's a...
Tuesday.
Wednesday?
I think it's a fourth, oh, shh.
Hold on.
I think I scheduled it on a select board meeting.
No, 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 because the select board's gonna change on the first and third of June. So that'll be an open Tuesday for us.
See, I did that on purpose.
The 27th will work.
Sure, subconsciously.
You did it on purpose.
That's the fourth Tuesday?
It'll be the fourth Tuesday. Yeah, because June is when we flip back to the first and third for a select board, so that one will work for us.
June 27th is a Tuesday. All right, that should work out just fine, then. 6:30?
Because I just put it in my calendar, so.
James, if I could just add one piece, I just want, it's important to me, and I think it's important in us conducting the town's business, that we approach things with a level of civility and professionalism. And the only reason I bring that up is, you know, in the past couple of weeks, I've asked some difficult questions. But I've framed those questions in a manner that was seeking information. And those questions were met with, in some cases, a hostile and confrontational dialogue. And I just think in our professional decorum, as we carry out the town's business, I really don't think there's any place for that. And I'm always gonna conduct myself as a professional. I'm not gonna get heated, there's nothing worth getting heated about in here. We can have a difference of opinion and be professionals. So I think we should all take that pledge to just be professional with each other and carry out the town's business as professionals, because the going on camera and calling people out, it's not reasonable. If you have a problem with somebody, address it with them one-on-one. I'm an approachable guy. I know my stature sometimes is off-putting to some people, but I'm an approachable guy, and I'm willing to have that difficult discussion. So if you have an issue with something I said, come talk to me. We'll have a reasonable discussion, but raising your tone, being hostile, that's not it. So I'll just leave it with that, I appreciate it.
We are all public servants.
Do we still get to jerk each other's chains?
Thought you were going somewhere else with that, that's gonna get weird.
Usually, I'm the one making it weird, and you're the one pushing it.
Any further comments, questions, non agenda items?
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, seconded. All those in favor?
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Been great.